To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Galloway.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Piana.
Here.
Lennon.
Here.
Mayor Coulter.
Here, thank you. Yes, we have a quorum this evening. The next item of business would be approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda? And if not, a motion would be in order.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved by Piana, supported by Martin. Any comments or changes to the agenda? Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Councilmembers Galloway.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The agenda is adopted. Moving on to presentations, we have two presentations this evening. The first one is a condolence resolution for former Ferndale Mayor Pamela McCullough. We were saddened as a community to learn last week that former Mayor McCullough passed away at the age of 60 years old from complications from a surgery that she had. Pam was the first female mayor that Ferndale ever had, and she served from 1994 to 1996. I've had a number of people over the past week reach out to me and share stories of Pam and her outgoing personality and her generous nature and her hard work ethic, and I know many, many people in the community are mourning the loss of former Mayor McCullough this evening, and so we have a... By the way, the Historical Museum was kind enough to lend us the photo that they have of Mayor McCullough that hangs in the Historical Museum. That is a picture of her. She was a young lady when she was the mayor back in 1994. They also were very kind. I have to thank Gary Andrews and all the folks at the Historical Museum because they were very kind in getting us some research and information about Pam's time on council, and as always, our folks at the museum were very helpful, and I appreciate that. So I'd like to read the resolution, if I may. City of Ferndale Resolution Number 2013. At a regular meeting of the city council of the city of Ferndale, Oakland County, Michigan, held at 300 East Nine Mile, Ferndale, Michigan on the 8th of July, 2013, I, Mayor David Coulter, on behalf of the Ferndale City Council, extend the city's condolences to the family of former Mayor Pamela McCullough. Pamela McCullough served this community with honor and distinction. She was a member of this city council from 1990 to 1994. Pamela was elected as Ferndale's first female mayor in 1994 and served in that capacity until 1996. She will long be remembered for her kindness, her generosity, and her dedicated service to the residents of Ferndale. Pamela McCullough was a credit to her family and to her community, and it is with deep sorrow that we mourn her loss today. I'd like to move for unanimous adoption.
Support.
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 Thank you very much. This is the second former mayor that Ferndale has lost in the past year. Mayor Peskowsky also passed away within the last year, and so our condolences and our sympathies are with Pam and her family and her friends and her many, many friends throughout the city of Ferndale this evening. Thank you very much. Does anyone... I don't know if anyone has any comments. Thank you very much. Our next presentation is... The Chamber of Commerce is here, and they're going to do a presentation of fundraising proceeds from their very fun Rainbow Run. Jennifer and Jay, welcome this evening.
Thank you. Good evening. I first want to thank you for allowing us to be on the agenda this evening. I'm Jennifer Rosenberg, Executive Director of the Ferndale Area Chamber of Commerce, and I'm joined by our Chairman Jay McMillan. Recently, our organization spearheaded the Rainbow Run 5K, which took place June 1st prior to Ferndale Pride. I want to start off by thanking the city of Ferndale for your tremendous support of this very colorful event. For a second year in a row, we sold out ahead of time. This year, we doubled in size with just over 1,000 runners and walkers of all ages, sizes, gender, races, and sexual orientation. With over 80% of the runners coming from outside of Ferndale and each bringing an average of one guest with them, the run brought in over 1,600 visitors to Ferndale that day, many of whom stayed for lunch, drinks, shopping, and the Ferndale Pride activities. The run provided tons of fun, as well as awareness of the importance of acceptance and diversity. To that end, the run helped raise funds for three nonprofits: Affirmations, Upstander, and the Ferndale Community Foundation. These charities were selected for the work that they do to advocate for acceptance, bring light to the negative effects of bullying and intolerance, and foster communities that are inclusive. We hope that the $2,200 that the Rainbow Run raised for each of these organizations will go a long way in helping them reach their missions. Thank you for all of your hard work. We must also thank the 22 sponsors who supported this cause. We have over 1,000 participants and over 80 volunteers. Without them, we could not have been successful. At this time, I'd like to invite John Fitzgerald of Affirmations, Craig Covey and Greg Palica of the Ferndale Community Foundation, and Lauren Lewis of Upstander to join me and the Ferndale Area Chamber's Chairman Jay so we can present them with their checks.
Hey, Michael.
Yeah, come on up. We love check presentations. Hey, Jennifer. If anyone wants to say thank you or say a few words, they're welcome to. We have a new wireless mic now. If anyone likes to say a few words. I think it's on.
It is. Is it on?
Yes.
There we go.
Yep.
Well, absolutely, we'd like to say thank you on behalf of the staff and the board and all the center users very much. This comes in handy, and we appreciate all the work that you guys are doing, too. Thank you.
I also want to say thank you on behalf of Upstander and the Friendship Circle. We were fortunate enough to be teaching in Ferndale this year, and with this money, we'll be able to do it next year, so we're very excited to be here in Ferndale.
On behalf of the foundation, as well as the Pride Committee, we're so pleased that the Chamber collaborates and joins with us. Your event lifts our event, and all of our events lift the city. So we plan to also be distributing proceeds soon, but great job. Great job to the Chamber. Thank you.
While you're back, let me just... While you're walking back, let me just add my thanks. You know, it's only the second year of the Rainbow Run, but it's already become sort of an institution in the city. It's a really fun event, and it adds a lot to Pride, and we really thank the Chamber for all the work that you do to put that on. Thank you both, Jay and Jennifer, very, very much. All right, our next item of business is call to audience. Call to audience is your opportunity to come and speak before council on any issue that you'd like that's not on the agenda, because you can speak to that when we get to that portion of the agenda. It's three minutes now. We'll do this for up to 30 minutes and more time if needed at the end of the meeting. So come on up, give us your name and your address, or if you're not comfortable giving your address, write it on the back sheet so that the clerk knows who you are, and let us know what's on your mind. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Craig Covey, 276 West Breckenridge, back for one other announcement. We are putting together again the annual Ferndale Pub Crawl. The Pub Crawl began 17 years ago in 1996. It's a walking tour of the pubs, restaurants, and clubs in downtown Ferndale. The sponsors this year include, presented by Rosie O'Grady's, Absolute Vodka, Boogie Fever, Dino's, Soho, The Bar Downstairs, Valentine Distilling Company, Howard Schiffman Labor Attorney, Relief Choices, and Schramm's Mead. The event features this year 16 stops. It's a walking tour. There's no motor vehicles allowed whatsoever. It raises money for four different charities this year. It's been the same charities the last several years. Those funds go to the Michigan AIDS Coalition, the Ferndale Auxiliary Police, the Ferndale Community Foundation, and Fern Care. We do have a meeting this coming Thursday, which would be the 11th of July, I believe, at Michigan AIDS Coalition. We do need volunteers. This event is put on, as all of our events are, by volunteers, and so if you'd like to help out, we'd love to have you. 6:30 at the Michigan AIDS Coalition Building at 429 Livernoy. But we really want to have people come out. It's one of the biggest nights of the year downtown, and in the 17 years, we've never had a problem. We've never had an issue, thanks to the Auxiliary Police. We want to invite members of council and the staff, many who traditionally come. City Attorney is always there every year, Mr. Chris. We'd like to see you again, and also Mayor Coulter. Seventeen years in a row, the mayor, going back to Mayor Geddard, all the way through you, sir, have been asked to come and lead off or send off the first group, and we'd love to have you do that again, Dave. More information on the website, ferndalepubcrawl.org. If I can leave this with the staff, maybe you can find a place. I'll bring it to you, Sharon Lynn. Thanks. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else like to address council this evening? Yes, sir. Come on up and list your name and address again. I know you were here last time.
Paul Kish, 707 West Hazelhurst. I would like to start this off on a positive. Mayor Coulter, I truly appreciated your sincere attention the last time. Mr. Chris, I appreciated you saying good evening. Mr. Martin, tonight, I appreciated you shaking hands outside of the council here. I have a letter that was written to Ms. April Lynch, City Manager, on May the 8th, 2013. This letter is a response regarding two separate occasions at your City Hall, trying to resolve an issue I had with my water bill. The first was on May the 6th, 2013. The second was on May 7th, 2013. On May 6th, I asked to speak with a person in your water department. I was referred to a woman called Carol. I explained my issue regarding the read dates not coinciding with the service period, also that I was being billed for 104 days of water usage. On top of this, my bill was an estimate. Long story short, I told Carol that I was not responsible to pay for 104 days' usage. Carol replied, "You can pay anything that you want, but if you do not pay the entire amount of 209, I will penalize you." Is this city policy to threaten a residence if you don't do what you're told? My responsibility was 90 days, give or take a day or two. At that point, Carol tried to justify the read date being different from the service period. I stopped her in mid-sentence, saying, "End of conversation." I do not take lightly being threatened when these issues are the city's mistakes, not mine. On May 7th, 2013, I stopped at City Hall requesting to speak with you, which would have been April Lynch. Instead, I was referred to Jane Marie. I spoke with Jane about the read dates being in excess of the service period. Jane said she understood this, but that she could not go back, only move forward. Jane asked me to call an immediate read to her office and that she would have an adjusted bill sent to me. I thought, "That's going to be even on higher bill." Jane had said, "You've used the water." I responded, "You're right. I have." I walked out of City Hall, saying to myself, "You just got screwed." Normally, I would not use this terminology, but I was taught by another one of your professional officials in Ferndale, specifically Judge Joseph Longo, that the word is proper in public. After being given a timeline to repair the outside of my house, I asked Judge Longo, "What happens if it rains?" His reply was, "You're screwed." Later on that afternoon...
You're at your three minutes, so I need you to come to a conclusion, but finish your thoughts, sir, please, but you are at your three minutes.
I thank you.
April, are we aware of the water issue, and is there an update? I mean, I'm not trying to put you on the spot if you're not.
I'm talking to his... His in particular.
Could you follow up with Jane Marie and find out what's going on with that water bill? Thank you. Thank you, sir, for coming. Thank you. Anyone else like to address council this evening? Dennis, good evening.
Yes, I was 1550 Spencer. I got a question. I mean, after every meeting, going back years, you usually ask the chief of police, the fire chief, you know, for comments of everything that's going on throughout the day, the past weeks, since the last meeting, so on and so forth. How come we don't have, like, our housing rental officers here, code enforcement, and even the building inspector? I remember the building inspector years ago used to come to city council meetings. He was here on Monday nights. Quite often, I mean, quite often. Very seldom did he miss a meeting. The reason I bring this up is because I don't think a lot of people realize or even know who our housing rental officers are. We've had problems with rental properties. You know, they're not taken care of and all that stuff. Who do you go see? I go over to this office down here, because I come in and I pull permits, and it used to be when you go right over here across the hall, you could come right by this office here. But things have all changed, and you don't see these people. How come these people aren't, you know, asked to come and attend these meetings so people, you know, on television, not just here at this podium, but on television, see who is in charge of what? You know, get a... Put a face to this person that's in charge, especially the housing rental office. I mean, there's an invisible person right there, or two or three, however many's in that office. But I mean, why aren't they held accountable? We've got properties out there that people complain about constantly, and nothing seems to get done. You've heard me. I made a comment about a tree that was across the sidewalk for over a year, and yet I could see a Ferndale car with that little green pyramid drive right on by. Just drive right on by. Maybe we better get better optical program for these people or something. I don't know. But I mean, let's put a face to some of these people, you know, besides just the chief of police and the fire chief and the DPW people. Yeah, let's make these other departments answer up, because, I mean, we got a house over there that's been sitting there as an eyesore after a fire for how long now, over there on Rosewood? You know, and the chief got up here, the fire chief got up here and explained to us what ISO stood for. You know, that's blight to the neighborhood right there, regardless of what you say. And that house ain't been touched. Yeah, I finally got a house in my neighborhood that I know I complained to a couple of times, and now it's one of the best-looking houses in the neighborhood because somebody bought it up, I guess, on foreclosure and is doing a dynamite job on it. It's the best it's looked in 26 years, 25 years, you know, because it was never taken care of before. But, you know, I just... Why not put these people out here so people can see who they are, besides just calling up on the phone, if you can get through on the phone? I mean...
Well, timing is everything, because I was going to point out to you that we do hold the director of code enfor... Code enforcement goes up to the Director of Community and Economic Development. Community and... Am I... I'm not...
That's correct.
Community and Economic Development. That is the director of that area in which code enforcement falls. And Derek Delacourt, who's now sitting in the back right on time, is the chief of that area, and so he is normally here at council, and he would be the one that we would address those questions to. We don't ask everyone on staff to come to council, but we do ask the department heads to come as often as they can, and that's Derek's area.
Are you doing housing rental, too?
Yep. All of that stuff falls under Derek.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Don't think as well.
Yep. He's the guy to see, and he's the guy we would initially contact, as opposed to staff.
Can I stand corrected, because he is here? Yeah, but I mean, you know, I just... It just makes me wonder, you know, because, I mean, I just finally seen a building in my neighborhood. Somebody must have said something, because it was right... You could see it right from the road, and it's been an eyesore, and people are living in there for probably four, five, six, seven years now. But I drove by yesterday, and I saw somebody must have said something, because they fixed the front of the building up.
Thanks, Dennis. Thank you. Anyone else like to address council this evening? Christina.
I'll do it, since I sneaked in at the last minute. So, from the Ferndale DDA, we wanted to publicly thank Ferndale Collision, Dino's Lounge, as well as Valentine Vodka for coming out and sponsoring our Get Real Movie Night that is coming up on Thursday, July 18th. That will be over on Buster Street on that Thursday evening. We invite people to come out early and, you know, get their spot, put their chair down, and then, you know, go and get some dinner somewhere downtown, because we know that you can make a whole night of downtown Ferndale on a Thursday. So, but the movie that night will be Mamma Mia. It will also be a sing-along with the Detroit Actors Theater Company, so get ready to get your vocal cords warmed up and sing along with them. I won't be, but you don't want to hear me sing. But it should be a real fun, fun night, and it's great to have some local entertainment to come out and help us, free of charge, of course, too. So they're volunteering all their time, and they love kind of just showing up and doing things. So it's a great group. Hopefully, people will go out and see them as well when they have their shows. So, other than that, I did just want to give just a quick update on West Nine Mile and how the West was won. We have completed the water main component, which is great, so there will not be water interruptions from this point forward related to the construction. But there will be kind of what will feel like a slowdown of work, because now they're going to be focusing on the detail work. It'll be concrete that will be poured. They had been doing the curbing, and most of the curb, I think, is actually poured as of this point. They will be working on it once it stops raining, more sidewalk pours, as well as dry vaprons. So if you are a business in that area, make sure that you're continuously communicating with us as we're communicating with you about your preference in terms of drive approaches, how you would like those to be handled, because they can do them in one fell swoop, or they can do half and half, so you still have access. But knowing that concrete does take five days to cure typically, so, you know, if you want a really long weekend, it's a good time to have a long weekend. So, other than that, hopefully people will start to really see the improvements. You know, as things start to fill in, you'll actually really begin to feel how we have reduced lanes in that area and how walkable it will become. Also, if those of you who weren't in town didn't notice because of the holiday, Taco Bell on West Nine Mile is down. So we encourage you to go get your Taco Bell fixes or run Woodward.
I did get a panicked email from a resident. "What happened to the Taco Bell?" I said, "Don't worry, it's coming back better than ever."
Yes, exactly. It wasn't bad. It will look so nice afterwards when it's done, but they are trying to team it up and time it with the rest of the construction that's happening at that end. So it was a surprise that one day it was there and one day it wasn't. Other than that, I just wanted to open it up if there was any other questions regarding the construction project, but that's kind of what we're working on right now. Okay?
Well, I assume, because I get very little questions about it, that you're handling them all, so I appreciate that. It seems like there's a good flow of information. It seems like the project is on track. I appreciate your update and look forward to improvements to come.
Yeah, definitely. I think businesses, they know they can either contact us or they can get ahold of DPW, and everyone's kind of working quickly. And the guys on the streets, the construction crews, they're great. They are really trying to work with everybody, so we appreciate that.
Good. Thanks, Christina. All right, anyone else for call to audience this evening? Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is items that the council considers routine, and we enact in one motion unless something is pulled from the consent agenda by council. So let me read tonight's consent agenda. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held June 24th, 2013. Item B is the adoption of a resolution proclaiming June 25th, 2013, as Arbor Day in the city of Ferndale. Item C is the adoption of a resolution authorizing councilmember Piana to attend the Michigan Municipal League's 2013 Convention in Detroit. D... So there won't be a lot of travel costs for that, I assume. Councilwoman?
No, there won't be.
D, adoption of a resolution supporting the United Communities of America Metro Detroit Citywide Night of Peace. E, approval of the dues for the Woodward Avenue Action Association totaling $3,125. F, approval of the special event permit for the DIY Street Fair to be held September 13th, 14th, and 15th, 2013. Item G, approval of a special event permit for the Funky Ferndale Art Fair to be held the same dates, September 13th, 14th, and 15th of this year. Item H, approval of a special event permit for the Run Like Hell 5K Run on Saturday, October 26th, 2013. Item I, approval of the 2013 Ferndale Dream Cruise Rockin' Live Entertainment Performance Agreements. J, approval of the Rec Pro Registration Software Annual Service Agreement with RC Systems in the amount of $3,400. Item K, approval of the quote from Overhead Door West for $7,550 to replace the front and basement doors at Fire Headquarters with matching security locks to the existing locks. L, approval of the First Amendment to the 2010 Pavement Repair Contract and authorization for the mayor and city clerk to execute the amendment. Item M, approval of the agreement with the city of Hazel Park for the use of holding cells and authorization for the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement. And finally, item N, approval of the bills and payrolls as submitted by the city manager's office, subject to the review of the council finance committee. What is council's pleasure on the consent agenda this evening?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented. Support.
I support.
Moved by Martin, supported by Lennon. Is there any other discussion on the consent agenda this evening? Questions? Comments? Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
Galloway.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The consent agenda is adopted. Moving on to the regular agenda. Agenda item A is a consideration of the fiscal year 2014 and 15 fee schedule, and our city manager is going to introduce that item, I believe?
I am, and unfortunately, we're having technical difficulties, so the PowerPoint is not working. I did email it just before the council meeting, but I do have some copies here for those of you who do not use your computers here. It's a fairly quick PowerPoint, so...
You have enough for everybody.
I do. I do. What I did was, I just focused on significant adjustments rather than going through the 36 pages of the fee schedule.
Thank you.
It's a very daunting task, and one of the things Joe's trying to work through right now is making it so it's a little more user-friendly on the website, but looking at every other community's fee schedule, ours is just... It's a lot as well. So with that, I'm going to go. I think I'm in somewhat order of your packets. I'm not really sure how they print it off, but there'll be plenty of time for questions and answers as we go through this. So, starting with general fees, the clerk's office had a few minor adjustments. Dog license in particular readjusted to $30. However, there is some pricing discounts for seniors. That is directed by Oakland County, not by the city, so those fees are set by Oakland County. We just administer. They can come here and get their dog tags, but it goes through the county.
And those fees go to the county as well, don't they?
A percentage goes to the county and a percentage comes to us.
So did the county say why they're tripling their fees?
He asked why the county...
Did the county indicate why they needed to triple the dog fees?
Um, no.
Number of dog licenses sold are going to go down?
Yeah.
I mean, it's definitely disincentive to have people license their pets.
This... You know what? This may be the three-year license fee. I have not had... I have not had any communication from the Oakland County animal, but I know that they are offering three-year licenses and I am wondering if this isn't what this is.
I have to stand corrected, they didn't, they didn't triple it. The $30 fee is for the license for altered dog after June 1st, it's currently 15. Um, the $7, the $6.50 one is for a senior 65 or older with a dog altered with proof.
There are about six or seven different fees based on the owner and the dog, et cetera.
It just looked like quite a jump. But I know we don't do it, I know the county does, I didn't know.
So it's going from 20 to 30, is that...
Well, yeah, on one line, the $30, the, the $30 fee, there's two of them. License for intact dog after June 1st goes from 20 to $30. License for altered dog after June 1st is going from 15 to 30.
But June 1st is the late date for that, so if you do it before June 1st, it looks like it's still 7.50 and 6.75.
Correct. $15 for license for intact dog, license for altered dog with proof is 7.50.
An altered means...
So that is a late fee?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Yeah, so it's still the, it looks like that's the same.
That's a lot better, I'm sorry.
Late fee that's, that's being...
That's $30, yeah.
Sorry, you can go ahead.
No, that's what we're here doing it for. Um, body decorating renewals is now, uh, it's $25 per year. There's an original license and then there's the yearly renewal after that, so. Um, then under, as well under clerk's office, this liquor license review is a $500 administrative cost for administrative and investigative costs associated with processing applications. We do a lot with that to get it to the point where it comes to city council. Investigations are done with the police department, we meet as staff, like review committee, things of that nature, so that covers all of those costs.
So may I ask a question about that? I'm sorry, that's a brand-new fee this year, right?
Correct.
So we've just never recouped those costs for this work before?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, secondhand and junk dealers is, is $250, and this is consistent with state law. Um, it's the, I believe it's a state law as it relates to pawnbrokers that is, allows us to charge that fee for the issued administration of that license. Um, more under the clerk's office is, uh, actually from fiscal year 2012. I don't believe last year we did a formal fee schedule.
That's correct, so these are the same fees the council approved when we put the new ordinance into place, they just have not been incorporated into the fee schedule officially.
So mobile and sidewalk vending are remaining the same from last year. Uh, business registration fees, as you know, were eliminated and moved over under the fire department under the reso, uh, community, thank you, Community Resource Allocation Program, which we'll talk about in a minute. We'll actually have a small presentation from the chief of police on that program. Or, did I say police? It's just messing me up here. Um, as you know, I believe last year at the same time we were talking about vendors, um, we eliminated the need for pedlar and handbill permit fees as well as garage sale fees, so those have been eliminated for those permits.
Um, I have a, do the chair have a follow-up question? I was just wondering if, um, the city clerk's office actually received any complaints via the garage sale now that we've had one year without permit fees?
We have not.
We have not, okay.
And I assume you are talking about complaints of people overusing garage sales?
Overusing garage sales, which is one of the concerns of eliminating the, the permit. So, okay, I appreciate that.
Um, before we move on to community and economic development, I am going to have a conver, we're going to have a small conversation on credit card, um, processing fees. Um, as you know, we've moved finally online payments to our website, and wish, with that brought a conversation about, um, many locations and many places do charge a convenience fee for credit cards. Uh, we have been using, allowing credit cards to be used on a call-in basis on the phone and finance as well as at the counter, and they had been charging, um, no processing fee. So we've had an internal debate within staff on if we should go ahead for this next year and maintain a zero and try to get people using our, um, using our program online or, um, looking at, again, a percentage, if you will, or a straight fee as it relates to, um, credit card transaction. Depending on which credit cards are used, it's anywhere from 3% to sometimes upwards of 5%. Um, what, it's one of those, um, a catch-22, really. You really want people to use online services, but we're not sure how much will be used and, and at that point, how much is, is the city paying for that use of credit card? So, we're looking at the possibility, if council wants to have this discussion, of going ahead and maintaining 0% transaction fee for this next fiscal year, but we are going to create a new line item that tracks our transactions and also will help us to see how many people are utilizing online payments and if we see some traffic decrease, um, at the counter and over the phone. Um, so our goal would be at the end is to really track the data, the transactions and things of that nature and start to do a cost analysis. If, if it is, if it is removing staff time, are we offsetting those costs by not having to have, we're never going to not be able to have somebody at the counter, but we're just trying to figure that out. So, I know it's, it's hard to start at zero and then explain to people why you need to move up, um, but I think we all know, in fact, it was interesting, again, internally, we all had four different ideas, but, um, I know many municipalities do charge the convenience fee, you do get that convenience fee at the gas pump, and then I had two issues this weekend that I had to use a credit card over the phone of which I got charged the convenience fee for that I had never had before, so there, it is trending in that way. So, uh, we are proposing doing it zero for this next year and tracking that data and really doing a cost analysis as it relates to staff time, um, or we can look at going and starting as soon as possible with a, you know, 1%, 2%, 3% convenience fee tapped on.
Well, I've got a question. If the person who processes payments is the person at the counter, and I've never seen two people up there and we can never get rid of one, what cost savings would we realize or, you know, what efficiencies would we realize from having more people pay online?
Sure, we, we only have one person at the counter, however, the second one does come up when it gets busy and there are many days that the line is out the door, and we've hesitated to bring another person to the front because we hadn't had online payments. And there are quite a few people who do call in on the phone, so now we can move them toward online. It's...
So we don't know how many, we haven't tracked that enough. Anecdotally, it seems like there's a couple occasions when the line's out the door.
Right. And we haven't marketed the new online service in a way that people, more people know about it.
And this is only for water bills, is that correct? Not taxes?
Uh, taxes is through a different program, and that's through the county, to pay local taxes.
And there is a fee for that.
That's a 3%, I think.
Yes.
Pretty significant fee for that.
It's a huge incentive in paying your taxes online, but...
Well, I, I guess my thought is, you know, with, um, with tax property value decreases, you know, we really raise quite a stink or get really upset when our property values go down by 3%, 5%, 6%, and then to give up that kind of money, um, on the taxes makes absolutely no sense to me at all. It seems like something we can't do. Um, with the water bill, um, you know, i- if we're not going to be able to realize cost savings and we get paid almost 100% of the money because if you don't pay, it gets thrown out your taxes anyhow, um, you know, the only reason to do it is a customer service perspective, and then I think the question becomes, can our system absorb a 3% hit if everybody starts paying online?
Correct.
My guess is that it can't, um, which would suggest to me that we should start, that we should charge, um, and there's no reason not to, but...
And we can start lower, too. We can start at 1.5% or 1% or whatnot, it just, it...
But the three, just to clarify, the 3% is what you estimate or...
At minimum, most of them are around 3%, depending on what credit cards you...
But your recommendation at this point is to do nothing for a year and get some experience?
Yes, um, however, I do recognize that starting at zero and increasing it, it, it's a hard pill to swallow. However, I think most people are recognizing that. I mean, wherever you go now, you see little signs that says due to credit card transaction fees, we now are charging that rate, so, you know, we could even do it for six months and see what we're tracking at or, but yes, I mean, right now it would be to do one year at zero to get people gravitating toward online, and unfortunately, though, we just have to be prepared for next year. But we might find that it's not as expensive as we think it is, but we just haven't tracked it well enough to know.
So that's my question, are you sure about the 3%? Is that a, is that a...
No, they range anywhere from, depending on the credit card, anywhere from any three, some I think, some might even go to as low as 2.7% to as high as 5% on transaction fees.
Yep, so if each credit card proposes its own percentage on the card.
Yes.
I understand what councilman Galloway is saying. I'm a little apprehensive in a ramp-up period to apply a fee. I would much rather have the discussion in a year with a year's worth of experience because even six months to me encompasses a ramp-up period because it's a new service, right?
Yes. Well, I, I agree with taking the one year, but I think it's inevitable. I think, um, I think it's going to be a hard pill to swallow. I think all businesses are dealing with this credit card fee and how do you cover those costs and do you charge it back to your customer, and that's typically the trend.
I do believe it's inevitable, but then we can also track in that year what the average costs are so that we can give an appropriate percentage. So my recommendation is zero for one year with data that we will provide.
And I guess I, I agree with councilwoman Piana that it, it is inevitable. I mean, there are fees associated with this, and at some point, the folks who don't pay online are going to be subsidizing the folks that do, and that's not fair, but, but, but getting our, a handle about how much those costs are and what potential savings, if any, there may be, uh, seems like a, you know, it may be inev, it, it may be, uh, just delaying the inevitable in terms of some sort of fee, but that seems appropriate until we have a, a stronger sense of what those are.
Um, under community and economic development, uh, there was a significant change in there. Um, we eliminated the building bonds, which we found to be prohibitive to, um, economic development, and so the purpose of eliminating the building bonds is this increases the business friendliness. Um, they haven't really used, they haven't been used as a way to gain compliance, and there is a lot of time associated with following up with the bonds, so I think as part of the one-stop-shop, if you will, um, Derek is proposing that we, um, remove, uh, the, the bond for, for those large projects.
Through the chair, I have a question. Does that include like garage, or not, sorry, driveways? Because I know you had to get a bond to redo your driveway, does that, is that included in that? Or bond insurance or something similar?
Yeah, anytime you pull a pro rent now associated with, uh, single-family residential construction, we've eliminated the bonds associated.
Okay, so that does, it's not just for small business, it's for homeowners as well? Okay.
Um, two other changes were per, per the state for mechanical contractors, 30, went from $30 to $45 in plumbing contracts from, there wasn't a fee to $35 per the state.
Yep.
Um, under the police department, a lot of the changes actually have been state-related, so, um, that's another one under the police department. Precious metal and gem dealer, um, is directed by the state. All dealers must get a precious metal and gem and, um, get a license from the city. Um, now, we're moving under the fire department, which is kind of a larger, a little bit bigger presentation. I know a lot of questions have been asked about how the commercial resource allocation and emergency, uh, program has gone, and I'm going to bring Kevin to the podium, and he's going to go over, um, where we are with the program, what's been going on, how it's working, and some of the benefits of this program. Do you need a copy of this?
Yeah.
Do you need a copy of the presentation?
Yeah.
It's right here on the corner, Chief.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council.
Okay.
Page four.
So, for the, uh, Commercial Resource Allocation Emergency Planning Program, um, we started out in 2010 with a new program focused on commercial inspections, kind of got the cart before the horse. So in 2010, '11, we focused on plan design and ordinance drafting. By 2012, uh, fire department clerk's office began putting the program together, and that's where we collected the data we had so we could go out there and apply the program, and then we implemented the program. And this year, uh, in implementation, we trained six firefighters as inspectors, so during their 24-hour shifts, they're able to go out there and go out to the businesses and do the actual inspecting and that, which we're not completely caught up to because we're still in data collection and, and fee collection mode, but we are finding a lot of things. We found, uh, several unsafe operations that do not meet city code, state, or OSHA, and ergo had to be, uh, straightened out and that. We found things that did not have a, uh, certificate of occupancy, um, businesses that weren't on anybody's radar in, within the city. So, the program, although, albeit it was started for one purpose, is completely brought us into a whole line of, uh, there's a lot of things happening out there that we didn't have on. Currently, we have, I'm not used to doing PowerPoints on paper.
I know, sorry. Neither.
Uh, we sent out 954 letters originally, but right now we have about 485 businesses that have responded. 381 have paid to date, we have 52 vacancies and 52 unpaid. Um, we have given out a third notice as, because it's a new program, uh, the city manager, we decided not to be playing hardball right off the bat. Many people don't understand it, uh, we've been explaining it throughout. We have had a few complaints, um, so therefore, as we collect all this, uh, data, we recognize that there's going to be some issues with more of the mom-and-pop style businesses, so we might have to re-engineer it for that level of, uh, participation because they really don't have that big a facilities and they really don't have that much, uh, that we would be worried about as far as emergency management or, uh, covering anything along those lines. Um, so we're going to review that and we'll have some modifications for the fall of this year. Um, the data is on every business, uh, we'll have immediate access for the fire department, such as, um, most reporting laws for hazmat are at certain levels, and a lot of places have all these chemicals, and they usually store them in one area of the facility, but they're not at reporting levels, so this is very helpful to us to know that that exists and where it's at, because when they all mix, they tend to go boom and make things really nasty, so that does help us a lot on that end. Um, I think we've covered just about everything along the lines of what we intended to cover today. Uh, the fees part, uh, like I said, we have many people that didn't understand it first, and now they get that every place is the business registration program and that there was an increase, and once they understand what's going on, they're pretty well into it. Um, Joe, uh, Gaucho did an excellent job on the online fee with the online people, so, online, uh, form, so we can fill that out and they can, uh, look at that online, and we're going to have a section written so that when they pull theirs up, their business information fills into that, quite a lengthy document, and therefore, they don't have to redo that yearly, they only have to make the changes necessary to move forward.
There's almost 1,000 businesses that received information, so they're going through that. They actually really didn't start the process until late September, so we're pretty far considering it hasn't even been a year yet.
Yeah.
Yes, I have a question. Chief, under the businesses that you are finding zoning issues and, uh, no CFOs, are you sharing that data with CDS or do they have accessibility, access, access to it?
Yes, and we're, we're also printing it so that the fire, our police department can access the information also. Eventually, we'll, we'll get with Don or whoever our technician is and centralize it so, uh, all city departments can access it readily.
Very good.
It's intended to be a shared document among all the groups.
Great.
Through the chair, well, I really appreciate that you're breaking down silos through this program and making sure all the departments are working off of one document, and I also appreciate, um, you addressing some of the concerns that I've, I've heard from business owners and while I've experienced on my, my own, working out a small nonprofit in the downtown where I was responsible for filling out the form, and I was too confused, um, with some of the, the items on the form, particularly as a, as a tenant of a building where I didn't know all the particulars of fire codes of the building in which we were renting, so I think that's where some of the confusion was, was coming into play for many of the business owners.
Sure.
So, I think, um, I think you're pretty clear that, that will be addressed, so I really appreciate that. The one concern I did have, though, is that we went from a $35 fee up to $100, which was pretty much a 65% increase, and I was wondering, is there a, a way to review that fee, so can it be lowered? Um, are we covering costs with the $100 because it was a pretty significant jump? costs with the hundred dollars? Because it was a pretty significant jump.
Well, the difference this time, though, is that you have a firefighter going in and doing the investigation and hunting them down and getting all of that information, so...
What if it's a long-term tenant? So what if we took an approach like our sidewalk permits, where nothing has changed, you just, you don't need to submit your plans and everything else again? So, I mean, is it going to be the same cost on an annual basis if nothing has changed?
Yes, for now.
That was the original attempt.
Because what's happening, just, I don't know if he really went into what he's found, but a lot of safety hazards. So the whole point is that if they go in every year to address those safety concerns, or to ensure that they're not making those same continual safety issues. I mean, it can be looked at if that's something council's interested in, or on a rotation or some nature, but there need to be, from what I'm talking, from talking to the chief, the consistency is important.
I get the consistency part. That I support. But there has to be, I don't know, a middle ground of somewhere between small businesses and larger businesses in paying that fee. I don't know what the solution is tonight, and I think it will come out of your discussions with the staff and reviewing some of this. And perhaps there can be a way to sort of decrease the...
I mean, is that the same fee whether you're inspecting industrial or...
Yeah, pretty much. The additions are on the fee schedule. The additions, if you're in occupancy one to ninety-nine, it would go up fifteen dollars, so you'd take one-fifteen if you had a hundred and two-hundred ninety. So anybody who has occupancies goes up with the level of occupancy. And then the other one is hazmat. If they're operating with hazardous materials, they start out at a hundred twenty-five. If they carry cryogenics, it would be extra seventy-five dollars, so it'd be a two-hundred-dollar fee. And following along the International Fire Code, those are for special operations with commercial or industrial production facilities. But yes, pretty much everyone does that. And going back to Councilwoman Piana's comment, we found that the real small mom-and-pop shops, singular massage parlor, those kind of things, it really took a hit on them, because they're not bringing in a ton of business to begin with. So that's what we're going to look at and see if we can equitably and fairly break that to a better level of, because obviously, they're smaller facilities, or they're renters within a larger building, and we don't need all that from that particular business. So I think once we get this, all this data in, we'll know a lot more where we're going and what we need to do. But I believe with Cheryl Lynn and the Clerk's Office doing the great job they did, it's really hard to track all this with inbound information. And it's really only what they wrote on a paper, on the original business registration.
Right.
So we're actually putting inspectors out. Currently, we're going street to street. In other words, we take Livernoy and all those that we don't have data from, we go in. Or if we do have data, we go in and confirm it with them and relook at that. And we haven't even got to the phase where we're taking all the plans and putting it into a database where we can pull it up immediately on a key truck, so that we can look at their floor plan and look at everything going on, as well as look at the data of what they carry and what they have, or what they produce, or what they store. So, yeah, the mom-and-pop shops definitely are overly burdened currently.
Well, I appreciate looking into that. And I know if doing anything on a sliding scale or a lower amount does take a management approach and a database in order to manage that information. So I appreciate you keeping it in the forefront of enhancing the program. I mean, the outcomes are excellent, you know, safer buildings, safer businesses.
Okay, thank you.
I get a question?
Oh, yeah, I do, actually. May I ask for the fifty businesses that haven't paid yet? I appreciate the third notice and the time you've given them and reminders to pay. What happens next?
They go to court. When Dan drafted the ordinance, we put the penalty fees in there, although originally, we talked about being able to put on taxes and that. So it's now a violation of the fire ordinance, so it goes to... Citation. Citation, and then it can go to a misdemeanor if there's not...
All right, thank you very much.
No problem.
Thanks, Chief.
Under recreation, one of the key significant changes for recreation for this fiscal year is a new program for adult drop-in, I believe for volleyball and basketball. And that is four dollars a visit, or five visits for ten. And I think Jill has, I think you have about two-hundred-and-fifty participants now in the drop-in. Is that what I remember reading? So that's pretty significant for one year, so becoming more and more popular. I'm excited about that. Under special events, we added another item called facilitator fee. Some, this is not everybody, but some events need more help during the event, which is usually after hours, or need extra assistance from Michael. A lot of times, this might be first-time events or things of that nature, but a lot of times, it's if they call him out on the weekends or things of that nature, that his, that fee is twenty-five dollars per hour. To be discussed with the group ahead of time, so they know that.
If I may, that's clearly outside of his regular working hours.
Yeah. Right? And in public works in the library, there were just, there were no notable adjustments. Again, I just went through things that had significant jumps, or things that I know we had talked about over the last year. I'm open to any questions that you have. We'll do the best we can.
I have a question.
Thanks. For the vendor fees, the ones that you're listing here, they're new for this twenty, for this fee schedule, but these are the same fees that we set when we sat down with the DDA and the business community and worked it out in 2012.
It needs to be put in the 2012 category.
Okay, so there's no adjustment there, though. And going back to the liquor license renewal fee, the five hundred dollars that's new this year, what does surrounding communities do? Do we have a sense of that?
We have not looked at that since, I believe, about 2012, and they ranged at that point anywhere from two-hundred to five-hundred dollars.
To the Chair, I also have a question. I know the DDA reviews the liquor license application as well, and comes up with a recommendation that comes to council, right?
I think they're part of the liquor review committee?
Yeah. So does that, they're not charging a fee, so would this help cover those costs as well, or is this just internal to City Hall?
The DDA is part of the review committee. When the license is in the downtown area, the review committee is made up of councilmember and most department heads.
Okay.
And those reviews can take upwards of two, three, four hours, depending on the complexity
of the... Well, oftentimes, the police department has to do investigations on...
And the building department as well has to do inspections. So there's quite a bit of administrative staff time involved.
Criminal background checks run and everything. It's quite involved.
And this is the initial application, not the renewal?
It is the renewal.
This is the renewal as well?
It's a...
No, no, this is the, this is a review fee for first time.
Okay.
Okay.
We do not charge a renewal fee.
We do not charge a renewal?
I think that's where I was getting stuck. Thank you very much.
And much of the renewal work is now, has been changed. Isn't that the process that changed, where the state is now actually administering, or taking over some of the...
We still have to make sure that...
Still the right to object.
Right. We still have to go through our public hearing process in order to object if we choose to.
But if I may, we mentioned the work done by the DDA. None of these fees, none of this five hundred dollars, this stays within the city budget, correct? We're not passing that revenue, any part of that revenue back to the DDA?
No.
Other questions, Councilman Martin?
No, thanks.
Anyone else have questions? If not, a motion would be in order.
I move to adopt the 2014-15 fee schedule as submitted by the city manager's office.
Support. Move by Lennon, supported by Galloway. Additional comments, questions, concerns on this item? Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you very much. Regular agenda, item B is a consideration of ordinance number 1146 to amend Chapter nineteen, Urban Redevelopment, Article Three, Housing Commission, Section nineteen through twenty-nine of the Ferndale Code of Ordinances.
Your Honor, I'd be happy to introduce that item very briefly.
Thank you, Dan.
At your June 24 meeting, after listening to Executive Director Wilson make her presentation with respect to the Ferndale Housing Commission, the city manager requested that I take a look at the ordinance provision with respect to the membership of the housing commission and the appointment process for that. The ordinance provided that the appointment process was by the city manager. As proposed in the ordinance for your consideration this evening, that is modified to be a mayor appointment with being subject to the confirmation of council. And that is the only change with respect to the proposed ordinance before you this evening.
Thank you for that clarification. And that was part of our discussion at the last council meeting. Councilman Martin, I think you made that suggestion that that is a more appropriate policy decision than the city manager's decision.
Yeah, I think it's more consistent with the role of this body versus the city manager's. There was no objection from the city manager.
No.
I move to approve ordinance number 1146, amending Chapter nineteen, Section nineteen through twenty-nine.
Support. Any questions or further comments on this item? Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Lennon?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. And so then a related item is item C, which is consideration to reappoint Carol Morenci to the housing commission, which is now our duty, I guess my recommendation with council's approval. And so Carol has been on the board for five years. She's currently the vice president of the board. She's done an excellent job by all accounts, and I would recommend to council her reappointment.
I move that we confirm the appointment of Carol Morenci in the Ferndale Housing Commission for amending May 5, 2018.
I support.
Any discussion or comments on that item? Pardon me?
No. I'd like to say thank you for her continued support and volunteering.
Thank you, O'Shea. Thank you very much, Councilwoman Piana. It is, all of these boards and commissions that our many volunteers serve on, they're without pay, and they're because they care about this community and the issues that they're involved in. And so, yes, I was remiss in not thanking Carol for her service, and we appreciate her willingness to serve again. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That appointment is confirmed. That completes the regular agenda this evening, which takes us to call to council. Derek Delacorte, Director, Community and Economic Development, including housing inspections.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Maybe that's a good place to start. I would like to point out, we did hear the comments earlier. Yes, our department, Community and Economic Development, and myself as the director, is responsible for code enforcement, building, planning, economic development, and all rental services. So if there's any questions, you can contact our department on any of those topics. The phone number's two-four-eight-five-four-six-two-three-six-six, and obviously, we're available on the website. I did want to bring up one point, and it's been written about a little bit, and been in the news, so I'm a little late to get here. But we did receive a sixty-thousand-dollar BRA EPA site assessment grant. We were part of a group of communities, five communities, that partnered with Oakland County to write a much larger grant. Our portion of it is sixty thousand dollars, and it can be used for any EPA or brownfield site assessment work. It cannot be used for bricks and mortar, but any upfront investigation that needs to be done in relationship to a property. And we have a wide berth of what we can use that money for. So we wanted to let everybody know, and we're very pleased, and want to thank Oakland County for including us in that group. And money should come available October 1st. So, thank you.
Derek, while you're here, I think a number of us on council received a letter, I know I did, from some residents on Withington about a property at seven-three-five Withington. Is that something that's on your radar and being addressed by your department?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you don't have to, you don't have to give an update this evening, that's fine, but if you could just keep us posted on the progress of that, I know a number of us have heard about that.
Yes, we'll provide an update next time we're here at the next meeting.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Derek. Jill, Recreation Department, our second meeting this evening.
Good evening. I just have one update. As many of you know, back in April, the mayor introduced the Blue Ribbon Parks Commission and tasked the group with soliciting feedback from residents on ways to improve our parks, as well as identify potential funding sources, and then bring recommendations to council later this year. The group has met a few times since April, and just wanted to give everyone a heads up. We're targeting mid-July to begin distributing our survey to the community. We're looking to have it online, as well as have hard copies available for those that want to fill out a copy at City Hall, the library, and as well as the Kulik Center. So we'll have more information to come, but just as a heads up, just in the next couple of weeks, we'll have that information out. Thank you.
Thanks, Jill. Appreciate it. Michael Larry, anything from special events this evening?
Just want to remind everybody that next weekend, on the 19th, 20th, 21st of July, will be Pig and Whiskey, right here on East Troy. And then, of course, in August, we have the Green Cruise, which will be on August 10th, right here on East Nine Mile. And then, of course, the following week, 15, 16, and 17, is the annual Ferndale Dream Cruise. For more information, just go to ferndaledreamcruise.com.
Excellent. Christina, has that covered for the DDA this evening? All right, thanks. Fire Chief, anything else from the fire department?
Your Honor, we recently had a fire in a factory over in the industrial section, and I'd just like to bring up, it was a similar setup to the Van Industries fire, which was quite a spectacular fire over a year ago. They tried to handle it themselves, and it went into the roof and through the roof, and it became quite an ordeal for us to get up on the roof and put it out, which the new aerial worked very well, and we were able to find it and extinguish the fire. So I'd like to caution businesses and homeowners, and anybody that has a fire, go ahead and attempt to put it out yourself after someone has called the fire department. That way, we're on the way to back you up, and if things go astray, we are there to get you out and put the fire out. It's not a problem that people are attempting to put their own fire out, but he said, "I thought we had it," and then it flashed over. And now the whole machine, which was probably twenty feet by fifteen feet and about twenty-five feet tall, was on fire, and that naturally became a big problem, and people could have got seriously hurt. So just looking at the thing, if you have a fire, yes, three or four of you can attempt with an extinguisher to put it out while someone else is calling 911, and we're on our way. Thank you.
Great reminder, Chief. Thank you. Cheryl Lynn, anything from the clerk's office?
Just quickly want to let you all know that I've been reappointed to the Board of Directors for the Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks for another two years.
Very nice. Awesome. Congratulations. April, anything else from the manager's office?
I do. A quick update. The court has officially moved, as of last week. They are now for regular administration, and to pay your tickets, you go to, I think it's 423 East Nine Mile, right across from the big Credit Union One Building. It's across the street from there. And then, if you come to court, you come right here to the city council chambers. Their phone numbers remain the same. The police department will start their move next week, and we have a bid that will be going out for the police and court renovations, or it's going out, I believe, tomorrow. And we anticipate bringing a formal acceptance of the proposal to city council at a special meeting on July 29 at 7:30. So there will be a special meeting again July 29 at 7:30 PM here at the city council chambers. The only thing on the agenda will be the final approval of the bid documents for the police and court buildings. So we are well on our way. We are, we remain on schedule, and we hope that in between the months of May and July, that we will be back in our new places for maneuvering. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Very good. Dan, anything else from the city attorney?
Just one item. Last council meeting, you adopted ordinance 1145, which amended the fireworks ordinance to limit and place hours with respect to the use of fireworks on the day before, the day of, or the day after, the national holidays. The police chief, I know, is not here this evening. He is going to be providing counsel with a report whether there was any issues associated with minors, because the ordinance does not preclude minors from using fireworks. And there is state law that prohibits selling to minors, but the actual possession by minors is an issue that he is going to ask council to take a look at. He is going to, I believe, have some data with respect to whether there's any issues with respect to this last holiday. So that may be coming to council in a couple of weeks.
Good. Appreciate it. Thank you. Councilman Martin?
Just two things. On June 25th, I had the privilege of going to our annual tree planting, and the beautification commission, and Peggy Snow specifically, and the DPW Lloyd was there with his team, did a really great job with the kids from the Kulik Center, I think, that they programmed there. And they just had an absolute blast, and it was a great education experience, and they planted two trees, and no one managed to get hit by a shovel or anything, and it was a lot of fun. And so that turned out to be a great event. So really, thanks to everybody who was involved in that. And then, secondly, just a question. I think we've all provided our feedback now, so do... we have an update as to when we can expect to see a performance review for the City Manager?
In August, the first one in August.
Okay, great, thank you.
I missed that date, what was it?
The first, the first meeting in August.
Oh, okay.
Councilman Lennon?
I have nothing to say, Mayor.
All right.
I've had a bad cough.
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that, hope you're feeling better. Mayor Protam Piana?
Yes, I just wanted to invite people from the Dales, residents, homeowners from the Dales neighborhood to participate in our first neighborhood barbecue, which is this Thursday at Garbutt Park. It's sort of a potluck, sort of looks like the Woodland Park Associations, is that what it's called, the Woodland Park Associations, picnic on Laverne, so we're trying to start our own. Garbutt Park, around 6 o'clock, bring your own dish to share.
And that is it. Thank you. Councilman Galloway?
Nothing from me this evening.
Nothing. All right, and as for myself, I'm curious to hear what the Chief has to say about the underage people and fireworks, but even though it was as loud as can be, excuse me, there were no major incidents, no, no major fire problems, no major problems from the Police Chief that he reported, so I thank the residents for using as much safety as they did. Seems like most people had a safe weekend, and I'm grateful for that.